Good morning. I am calling to order our regularly scheduled meeting of the Committee of the Whole. My name is Elizabeth Glidden. I'm the chair of this committee. And I am joined today by councilmembers Gordon, Conno, Reich, Bender, Frye, Andrew Johnson, Quincy Worszami, Goodman, Council President Johnson, and Councilmember Palmasano. We are a quorum of the committee. And we have three items of business on the Committee of the Whole agenda for today. The first two are consent items, and I'll read those and then move them together. The first item is setting a public hearing for January 11th, 2017, in the Committee of the Whole to consider amendment to the Safe and Sick Time and Extended Ordinance relating to extended employment programs. This would be to consider an ordinance amending Title II, Chapter 40 of the Minneapolis Code of Ordinances relating to administration, workplace regulations exempting certain state subsidized extended employment programs from coverage under the requirements of Chapter 40. Item number two is receiving and filing the 2015 Annual Report of the Minneapolis Ethical Practices Board. And I will move items one and two. Is there any discussion on those items? Seeing none, all in approval, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. And those items are approved. We have one item for discussion, and this is our regularly scheduled quarterly report on the 2016 Sick and Safe Time Ordinance. And so I believe Ms. Corbelle is going to lead us through this discussion.
So, good morning, Council Vice President Glidden and committee members. My name is Velma Corbelle, and I am the Director in the Minneapolis Department of Civil Rights. And as mentioned, we are here to request receive and file of our second quarterly report that we are required to present to Committee of the Whole as of a staff direction back when this ordinance was initially passed in May of this year. Just as a reminder, this is the staff direction on the screen. The city council hereby directs the Civil Rights Department, together with other affected departments, to report quarterly, et cetera. As a reminder, our implementation goals, since it's the Civil Rights Department, along with several other departments responsible for implementation, are to reach out to businesses and employers with the information and tools necessary for compliance to provide that education and awareness for employees about their rights, and also to engage staff and stakeholders, both in the city and outside the city, for effective implementation. Our key objectives for this most recently completed quarter were to complete the frequently asked questions, drafting, and publication. You may remember, instead of heading directly into rulemaking on the enforcement procedures, we have opted to present enforcement guidance in the form of FAQs. And those have been drafted, reviewed several times by the City Attorney's Office. They'll continue to review those as we seek to finalize that draft. But our first, larger distribution of those FAQs will happen on December 12th, about a week from Monday. Other key objectives were to develop and brand our key communications pieces, screen and nominate members of the Workplace Advisory Committee, prepare and send a business mailing, and begin to draft the enforcement rules. With regard to developing and branding our key communication pieces, we talked last quarter about the website, a checklist, a poster for businesses, and also our presentation materials, and we continue to try to refine those. We have actually secured the services of, in one of our milestones, secured the services of a graphic designer, to actually make those a little bit more accessible, well, a lot more accessible, but also a lot nicer in terms of how we intend to communicate with folks in the community affected by this ordinance. With regard to the Workplace Advisory Committee, we continue to receive applications to that committee, and we are just trying to create the right balance of membership on that group before bringing a slate of individuals to the committee for approval. So that is ongoing. We sent a business mailing to about 16,000 business addresses the week of November 21st, and that seemingly has been well received. We have been getting some feedback as a result of that, but I will talk about that here a little bit later in the presentation. And then again, the enforcement rules. Our milestones this quarter, again, the business mailing to 16,000 Minneapolis businesses, the services of a facilitator for engagement and outreach, and also the graphic designer. We engaged with members of the previous Workplace Regulations Partnership Group. We saw that it was beneficial to engage with those individuals in order to have them review our engagement materials and strategies, and also our FAQs, because that group has been with this work since the beginning and likely have a higher understanding of what the intent and the expectations were as a result of the ordinance. And then we've also had various engagement and outreach to stakeholders, individuals and groups in the community. I mentioned our second quarter feedback, as we've been getting questions either through our email address, through a phone number, or through 311. Since the adoption of the ordinance, we've gotten about 67 questions or comments. You'll see how those questions and comments break down on the screen. Since the letter to the 16,000 businesses went out the week of November 21st, about half, or around 30, between 30 and 35 of those inquiries have been, as a result of the letter, going out. I understand that most of those inquiries have been about tracking sick and safe time for employees. There's also been, you know, that expected and understandable pushback against the actual creation of the ordinance. But for the most part, people are really just asking questions about what's in the ordinance and how it affects their business. Our objectives for the next quarter, we want to finalize our communications pieces. We want to begin conducting listening sessions, both for employers and employees. We want to release the FAQs. We have unrestricted release of those FAQs between now and April. And we also want to finalize the enforcement rules. One of the things that's not on the screen that we want to do in the upcoming quarter is to engage, to the same level that we've been engaging with businesses, we also want to engage with our providers that might be affected by the safe time provisions in the ordinance. And so we've created some special kinds of outreach for folks who might be interested and affected by the safe time provisions. And again, with regard to the FAQs, I wanted to just reiterate that those FAQs have been drafted by the Civil Rights Staff. They've received multiple reviews by the City Attorney's Office, and we will continue to engage with the City Attorney to provide some oversight into the narrative that we're putting out to the community. The purpose of the listening session, and our first one, is business focus will happen on December 19. It's really to continue to familiarize the participants with what is in the ordinance, but also for us to understand what types of issues and concerns and business scenarios individuals and organizations might be interested in having us answer for them. And then the last slide is just the contact information. We always want to put that out in whatever medium we're using so that individuals and organizations know how to get ahold of us if they have questions or comments. Thank you, Madam Chair.
All right. Thank you very much. And I'll just ask, I haven't seen questions from councilmembers, but I'll just ask again before we close up this item. Does anybody have any points of interest or other feedback or questions? And I'm not seeing any. So, thank you very much for that report. It's good for us just to stay connected to this process that I know is taking a lot of energy and time, and so thank you for that work.
You're welcome.
And Brian Walsh as well.
Yes.
And all of your staff. I know many are working on this around the city as well. So with that, I think we just receive and file the presentation. All in approval, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. And that item is approved. Next, we go to our reports of committees, and the first is the Community Development and Regulatory Services Committee chaired by Councilmember Goodman.
Thank you, Madam Vice President. There are 23 items that we're going to be bringing forward for approval tomorrow, or Friday, including a large number of well-known issues. So we'll start with item number one, which is the city council's confirmation of Greg Ross as the new Executive Director of the MPHA. I would ask folks to feel free to come talk to me about that. There was some concern expressed in a letter recently from the Glendale residents with regard to the process, and although I didn't set up the process, I served on the committee, and I'm happy to talk about what the process is. I'll also note that everyone was invited to come meet Mr. Ross the morning prior to the confirmation, and a majority of people on the council did do that, and I thank you for that. Items two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight are all land sales. Item nine is, it's actually quite a major change through Business Made Simple to our food license requirement ordinance. There are a lot of changes being made as a result of the Elms process, and so this is to help streamline applications under Business Made Simple for food licenses. Item 11 is a motor vehicle garage denial under, it's rejecting their license essentially. Item 11 is a rental dwelling license revocation. 12 are the regular liquor business and gambling license applications. Item 13 is a license amendment for Penny's Coffee. 14 is a rental license reinstatement. 15 is a grant agreement with Hennepin County for the Cedar Riverside Opportunity Center, so that's really good news. Item 16 is acknowledging an LCDA grant for both the Indian Neighborhood Club expansion and the Mini Ha Ha Town Homes project, which I'll note again is the public housing project that's partnering with the city in the 12th ward. Item 17 is the carryover of our housing revenue entitlement bonds, and I'll note many of you have heard about kind of the chaos the bond market is in as a result of the change in president, and we probably will ask for an update in committee about what's happening with all of our entitlement revenue bond programs that fund affordable housing in 2017. Item 18 is our ESG recommendations, which is the Emergency Shelter Grant recommendations. Item 19 is a rental license denial. Item 20 is a nuisance condition property waiver. This is for a fire damage property that happened about a week ago on the north side, as is item number 21. 22 are recommendations for our rehab support program, and 23 is essentially the meat of the intentional community's ordinance, and it was fairly extensively discussed in CD and a little bit in zoning and planning as well. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions about items one through 23.
All right. I'm not, okay, we do have one comment. Councilmember Frye.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I don't intend to trigger a massive debate right now about the intentional community's ordinance. It was excessively discussed during CD RS, and I provided my opinion there. I do continue to have very significant concerns about a significant portion of the ordinance. I'm 100% on board with the increased occupancy levels and getting rid of the limits. However, I have major concerns about the ramifications of promising that we're going to, well, actually, rather than just pontificate, I guess I have just one question, and I know it's not generally proper to ask questions of other councilmembers, but would Councilmember Gordon be willing to yield to a question?
Why don't you put out there what's your point, and then let him.
My question, well, in fact, it's
Let him identify, he can respond.
Yeah.
And I'll just say also, Councilmember Frye, excuse me, is that this actually is a perfect time for discussion.
All right.
So I really appreciate that you have done that. I think it's better we have discussion here than on Friday when we're in the midst of trying to understand your opinions as well as others. So thank you for that.
Thank you. One second here.
Yeah, take your time. No problem.
Here we go. Let me see. We are on, it's 23.1, so looking for
And for others, the ordinance is in your book on page 23.1, or if for those who are kind of up on their computer, they could also find it linked in the CD RS agenda.
Yes. Thank you, Madam Chair. So it's actually 23.2. My concern, again, is not in the lifting of the occupancy levels. I'm all for intentional communities. I'm all for unintentional communities. I'm all for allowing additional people to occupy a space so long as it's inspected beforehand and they have the proper amount of lighting, they have the proper amount of square footage, and it checks out on all of our regulatory requirements. For it, 100% for it. Here's my issue. C1 through 5 says, "For purposes of this section, a family may include a group of two or more unrelated adults living together in dwelling unit when operating as intentional community. Factors that shall be considered." I want to make explicit note of this. It says, "shall be considered in determining whether a group operates as an intentional community." Include, and then it lists five things. Including whether the members of the household share the entire dwelling unit, whether the members of the household have rules, democratic governance, maintenance responsibilities, and household issues. So in other words, there's like an election and they're adopting a constitution and/or a charter. Three, whether the members of the household unit share as their legal address for purposes of including but not limited to voter registration. So this is something that we're apparently looking into. Driver's license or identification purposes of, I'm assuming, that address, motor vehicle registration, and the filing of recent receipt of tax documents. This is stuff that we're going to be considering. Four, whether the group is transient or temporary in nature, and I don't know exactly how that's defined. And five, whether the members of the household share expenses for food, rent, ownership costs, utilities, and other household expenses. So first, I'll make the argument, and then I'll ask the question. We're enforcing, or supposedly enforcing, these items that is in every single respect getting into people's dirty laundry. We are, I mean, we're quite literally saying you have to have a democratic process that, you know, elect somebody, puts up a constitution. You have to share expenses for things like food. So Franklin's supposed to get the milk this week, and Suzanne gets the milk the next week. Somebody's supposed to have, you do the sweeping, and somebody's supposed to do the mopping, and you have to, I mean, this is stuff that we're actually regulating. And I'm a liberal, but this seems a little bit overboard as far as what we're going to be doing and what we're not going to be doing. So here's the thing. Let's be really clear. If we're going to be doing all of these things, I would argue adamantly that we should not. I think this is going to get us into all sorts of trouble. I feel like bias and even potentially racism can come into play. We're going to be checking out if somebody's motor vehicle registration, we're going to be checking their voter registration to see that they're registered at this particular address. This is opening us up to all sorts of problems. So if we're going to be enforcing it, I should say we shouldn't be. And if we're not going to be enforcing it, let's not have the language in there. Laws matter. Words matter, and the best way to undermine government is to pass laws that can't be or won't be enforced, and that's precisely what we're doing here. So my question is simple. Are we going to be enforcing these things? And if not, let's not have them in there.
Thank you, Councilmember Frye. So I don't know if others want to be in queue and to either comment or express a response to questions. Councilmember Gordon, I know, has asked to have the floor.
Thank you very much, and I'm happy to talk about this. The key to those items that were read is our effort to define what an intentional community is. Other cities have done this, and they call it something like a functional family, or they have different terms for it. And essentially, people would be self-identifying, and they would want to know, well, what is an intentional community? And we've listed some things that aren't required, but they shall be considered in determining whether or not you're functioning as an intentional community. And they'll be considered by the person, the group applying to do so. They'll look at those, and they'll say, yeah, we share the entire unit, or else they'll say, oh, no, we're all in a bunch of separate little apartment buildings. I guess we aren't really an intentional community. And those factors can also be used and considered if we have to make a call on whether or not this is an intentional community. The way the ordinance is set up, and if you look at the later section, people will fill out an application, much as people might fill out a form right now saying that we are domestic partners and we want to register with the city. So they fill that out, they're claiming that they are, we can give them a definition of what that means, and then they bring that to the city. And this is the same here. In this case, because people are concerned about it, we're actually asking them to go and get a notarized statement saying, and attesting that they're doing it. So we're taking people at their word. And then also, if there's questions later, we can go back and we can look at, well, here's the items we're supposed to consider. And if you actually look beyond that, then there's also some things that we would consider would indicate that you're not. If you're operating as a rooming house, there's some instances where you can't be functioning as an intentional community, so they're listed later. So these are things that shall be considered by the person, or the group applying, and also, if it comes to enforcing it, yeah, absolutely, they can be considered. But no, we're not requiring, it doesn't say, shall be required to do the following. It says, these are factors that shall be considered in determining whether a group operates as an intentional community or not. And we, I'll just note that these weren't identified lightly. There were lots of discussions, there were lots of community meetings, there was a coalition of groups interested in doing this, there was housing inspections staff, rental licensing staff that were included in the meetings and worked on these, and these were the items that met with the satisfaction of all those groups and community members as included in the definition of what is an intentional community.
All right. Councilmember Bender.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I think it's important that we have this discussion because while this particular proposal has been described in some contexts as an incremental step toward relooking at our occupancy rates, I think it has a lot of underlying assumptions that are troubling to me as well. I think it's important to remember the history of zoning and of housing policy in our city and across the country, and to acknowledge that when we're making decisions. We recently designated an historic district that was one of the first integrated housing developments in the country, and before that, there were all kinds of rules in place, covenants and zoning restrictions that segregated our city and were racially exclusionary. And that is the history of zoning and housing policy in our city and across the country. And so I think that the thing that concerns me the most about the list of requirements is the assumptions it makes about why people live together and the impacts of people living together on their neighbors. It makes the assumption that if you share chores or you have a democratic governance in your home, within the walls of your own home, ostensibly that you'll be a better neighbor to folks next door or across the street. And, you know, I live in a neighborhood that's filled with people living in all different kinds of homes and shapes and sizes. I happen to live in a single-family home, and my neighbors have many, many people in a building that's about the same size. And they're not louder than we are, they're not troublesome, they don't break any of the rules that we have in our housing codes. But if they did, we have all kinds of regulations as a city that talk about noise, that talk about maintenance of our properties. And in my mind, it would be better, a more straightforward approach, to look at our occupancy requirements and to address any troubling behavior or problems with properties through our other regulatory functions, and not to try to govern who gets to live together, to ask them to notarize their situation inside the walls of their homes, and to rather take a look at why we think we need to regulate how many people live within a building in a configuration. Why is it okay for folks to live in an apartment building as long as it has walls, but not live together in a big, old, beautiful home together if they choose to do so? Why do we care if they have shared chores? I think it, again, goes back to the assumptions that we are making about who gets to live together and who doesn't. And that's where I have concerns as well, particularly about these details that are listed in the housing portion, that kind of outlined so much interest by our city government in what's happening in between those walls of the home.
So I'm not seeing any other, did you see another?
I'm just going to finish up.
Oh, okay. So Councilmember Frye, she should be in queue one more time.
Sure. So, the answer to the question as to whether items C1 through 5 will be enforced, the answer is very clearly no. They will not. If they were to be enforced, I would absolutely vote against them because I think the implications are horrible, and since they are clearly not going to be enforced, I don't know why we're going to have them in there. You know, I think, I understand the effort, I understand there was a long community engagement process, and I appreciate, I sincerely do appreciate all the work that councilmembers Gordon and Goodman have put into this. But the quickest way to erode the confidence in government is to pass laws that can't be enforced and that won't be enforced, and we're explicitly saying on the dais here that these are not requirements and they won't be enforced. If that's the case, let's be really honest with ourselves and take these items out.
Councilmember Goodman.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I take exception to the argument that this won't be enforced.
That's what he said.
Someone who comes in and says, I want to be an intentional community, and I'm a landlord, and I have 10 people who are coming to live with me, and doesn't have any of the other kinds of things in line that intentional communities need, won't get licensed to be an intentional community. So it will be enforced. Unfortunately, we often have to put regulations in place to predict what the worst people will do instead of the best people, and there is a legitimate concern in the community that this is just a way for bad landlords to get around occupancy requirements. So what I would say more than anything else is, don't get rid of the good in lieu of the great. This is a good thing for people who live in co-ops, this is a good thing for people who currently live under the radar in intentional communities. It's stopping people from creating new intentional communities that meet the intent of co-op or cooperative-type living. So I realize you'd like something different and better, but the process that was put together so far was mindful of the fact that occupancy in many parts of the city is still an issue, while allowing people who are doing good things, living together, be daylighted and not considered illegal.
Councilmember Frye.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Well, it's entirely within your prerogative, or anyone's prerogative, to take exception with my opinion. This is the language that is in the ordinance right now, and this is explicitly what one of the authors, the co-author, has said will happen. Now, I don't have a problem with D. I don't have a problem with the requirements as far as the notarization. And I certainly don't have a requirement that our inspectors go into the building beforehand to make sure that it's up to code, people aren't living in hard conditions, and that they're making sure that landlords are not, we're not letting them take advantage of the neighborhood and the people living in the building. I'm all for that. The items, again, we got to be specific, are C1 through 5. And C1 through 5 says, shall be considered, the author of the ordinance says that they're not requirements and wouldn't be enforced. And so if that's the case, let's be really honest with ourselves.
Councilmember Gordon. Councilmember Gordon.
I also think the ordinance says there are items that shall be considered, and I think that's the hair that we're trying to split here. I think if you look at definitions of many other types of land use or things, how do we define a group residential facility? How do we define a lodging establishment? How do we define a fraternity and a sorority? We have definitions there that then are interpreted. What we're giving here is guidance of what an intentional community is, and these are factors that need to be taken into consideration. I think all our ordinances could probably always be perfected and improved upon, and I understand that Councilmember Fry has some particular issues with this section of this ordinance. I'll reread it and I'll look at it over again, and I'll see. I just know that this is something that we've landed on and has passed committee with over, I think it was a five-to-one vote of support. It's also been vetted with staff and community members, so I'm comfortable with the language.
Councilmember Bender.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just wanted to be more specific as well, and I think it's a fine point that this is the ordinance that's in front of us. We don't have an ordinance in front of us that's taking on the overall issue of occupancy. But I just wanted to walk through my concerns about these specific items, so whether or not members of the household share the whole dwelling unit and function as a single housekeeping unit. You know, I'm concerned that that's overreach. I don't know why we need to require that members of the household haven't adopted set of rules covering democratic governance, maintenance responsibilities, and other household issues. Again, I think that's overreach. I'm concerned about requiring that folks use their legal address when that is not true in other places. I think a lot of people register to vote at their, you know, parent's house or something, and I don't know why we want to require voter registration in a certain location for individuals living in a particular way. Whether or not the group is transient or temporary in nature, I guess I would ask the authors, I could do that offline, about why the one-year calendar year piece was included. And then, you know, whether or not members of the household share expenses for food, rent, or ownership of cost of utilities, in particular, the food portion, again, it just, it almost sounds ridiculous, frankly, to require people to share expenses for their food. So I think that a lot, if you look beyond this into understanding all of the language that talks about these not being rooming houses, which were made illegal in the city of Minneapolis in the '90s, new ones, you know, there's a lot of other language in the ordinance that I think is trying to get at some of the other things that we are describing and we don't want these to become. So again, the overreach of describing people's personal lives and how they pay for their belongings doesn't seem to fit within this ordinance.
All right. Thank you. I'm not seeing any further discussion. I'll just kind of ask one more time before we move on. So not seeing anything further. We will then turn to our next committee report, which is Election and Rules, with its chair, Councilmember Fry.
Thank you, Madam Chair. We had one item on the agenda, which was the adoption of some amendments to the rules.
All right. Next, we have Health, Environment, and Community Engagement with Councilmember Gordon.
Thank you very much, Madam Vice President. The Health, Environment, and Community Engagement Committee will be bringing forward nine items for approval on Friday. The first is approving appointments to the Community Environmental Advisory Commission. There's council and mayoral appointments. The second is directing city coordinator staff to report back on our green zones work group. They came and gave us a report at the committee because that was when we were expecting the policy to be done, but it wasn't completed, so they've been directed to come back in March on strategies developed by other jurisdictions to make green zone improvements. And the third item is approving the 2017-2019 American with Disabilities Act action plan. We had a lot of discussion about that, and I've been working on that for a long time, so that's a fairly significant piece of work. Second item is our 2016 Neighborhood Relations Department Diversity Survey reports. There were two reports. We surveyed the advisory boards and commissions that the city has, as well as the neighborhood organizations. The fifth item is clean energy partner gift acceptance from Excel and CenterPoint Energy, $10,000 each. You move forward with some work of the Community Energy Partnership and doing community engagement for efficiency. Sixth item is a contract with PACE Analytic Services for lead and healthy homes program. This is authorizing an agreement with PACE in amount not to exceed $120,000 to provide those services for us. Seventh item is accepting a grant from the School-Based Health Alliance for National Quality Initiative for school health services. The eighth item is a contract with Volunteers of America for community health worker services not to exceed $241,500. This is to provide services in select Minneapolis Public Housing Authority high-rise buildings to assist residents in preventing and managing diabetes and hypertension. The ninth item's authorizing execution of a community solar garden subscription with Sun Edison. This will be our next community solar garden that the city will be involved in. Also, as part of that, we're directing finance and property services staff to explore a final or a third, I guess, community solar request for proposals that would allow more Minneapolis residents and businesses to participate, including those with low and moderate income as customers. I also wanted to mention that I'm planning on walking on an item, adding it to the agenda. This has to do with the MPCA that has come forward. I guess they're reaching a settlement. They put out a public statement, and also they met with me and city attorney's office and Councilmember Yang, talking about this, wanting the city to join and participate in their lawsuit having to do with Northern Metals. And so I'll be bringing a motion on Friday. I think that the MPCA's press release has been shared with everybody at this point. And I stand for questions on any of those.
Thank you. I'm not seeing any questions. Next, we have Intergovernmental Relations Committee report. For this, there were four items on the agenda, and the first one is a significant item in that it requires unanimous consent of the city council. It is titled, "The Plain Language Charter Technical Amendment Ordinance." In the Intergovernmental Relations Committee, we heard a very thorough report from city attorney Bert Osborne, who is also staff to the Charter Commission, going through all of the technical amendments. Essentially, these are some items that, due to the Plain Language Charter amendment as a whole, were some technical items that needed to be changed to align with the intent of the Plain Language Charter. So I haven't heard questions from colleagues, but again, this is an item that requires 13 council members to vote on it, to approve it, excuse me. Item number two is adoption of our 2017 legislative agenda. This is the shorter list of select priority items that would be the focus of our staff's work at the Capitol that could later be amended in light of changes that we need to be engaged on. And then items three and four are contracts for state legislative services. And I'll stand for questions. I'm not seeing any. So next, we have the Public Safety Civil Rights and Emergency Management Committee. And I understand that Councilmember Yang is ill today, and Councilmember Gordon is the vice chair of that committee.
Thank you, Madam Vice President. The Public Safety Civil Rights and Emergency Management Committee is bringing forward six items for approval. The first is the Minneapolis Commission on Civil Rights Appointments. You can find all those appointments in the agenda, I won't read through them all. But the second is also appointments on the Police Conduct Oversight Commission. And the third item is the appointments to the Police Conduct Review Panel. The fourth item is approving a contract, authorizing a contract with Corner House Interagency Child Abuse Evaluation and Training Center for conducting forensic evaluations of children and vulnerable adults in the amount of $525,000 and a little more. The next item is authorizing submission of an application to the Minnesota Department of Public Safety for a sex trafficking and training grant. And the final item is passage of a resolution accepting a donation of camera equipment for the Ventura Village neighborhood organization for the third precinct. And I can stand for questions on any of those items.
All right. I'm not seeing questions. Next, we have Transportation and Public Works with Councilmember Ray.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The committee forwards 20 items for full council consideration. Item one is the Shingle Creek Watershed Management Commission appointments as listed. Items two, three, four, five, and seven are all approvals for reconstruction projects for the locations listed. Item six is the Samatour Crossing Layout Approval and Easements. Item eight is the 2017 Minneapolis Open Streets, approving the list of routes for the 2017 Minneapolis Open Streets activities. Following items are referred to the Ways and Means Committee. Item nine is the Downtown Minneapolis Transportation Organization Grant Agreement. Item 10 is the grant from the Minneapolis Historical Society for Conservation of Sculpture Clock on Nicwlet Mall. Items 11, 12, 13 are all amendments to and adjustments to contracts for existing activities. Item 14 is the agreement with Coen Partners, PV Plaza Historic Landscape Preservation and Architectural Services. Item 15 is the agreement with the Minnesota Vikings LLC to evaluate feasibility of a counterflow crossover between Third Street South and Fourth Street South. Item 16 is the A Street Reconstruction and Street Lighting Project, and that's a postponement of the levy assessments to 2018. The item 17 is the Seward Bicycle Boulevard Layout Approval, Grant Acceptance and Cooperative Agreement with Hennepin County. And items 18, 19, and 20 are all low bids for activities of the department. I'll stand for questions, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Councilmember Ray. Next, we have Ways and Means with Councilmember Fenton.
Thank you, Madam Vice President. Ways and Means will bring forward 23 items consideration on Friday. They're primarily routine end-of-the-year kind of financial matters. I just wanted to highlight, there's five legal settlements. Looks like within the finance, or city attorney's office, rather, there are three contracts, including one with Thomson Reuters for online legal research, one with Hennepin County Department of Community Corrections, and another contract with Domestic Abuse Project for their 24-hour domestic abuse hotline services. There's also a selection of bond counsel. The city clerk's office has the donation of a book scanner from Bethel University, as well as Minneapolis Political History Project contract with Dr. Tony Hill. There's also a grant acceptance from the Funders Network for Smart Growth in Livable Communities, contract with Improved Group for Services related to Recast Minneapolis Grant, agreement with Public Art Consulting for Weber Park Library, contract amendment with Peterson Companies for contract closeouts, this is at the Convention Center. There's also an annual property insurance premium for Minneapolis Convention Center, the Talmadge Building and the parking ramp. We have a contract with Perkins &amp; Will, Inc. for pre-design and program development services for the new downtown office building project. We have the annual general fund contingency budget usage resolution, as well as a resolution related to the target market ordinance and its relationship with the permanent review committee. There's also an official IRS intent declaration to issue tax-exempt bonds. And I wanted to highlight the establishment of the City of Minneapolis Accounts Receivable Policy as item number 21 on the agenda. The final two items is an IT gift acceptance for conference travel and a revenue agreement for the Downtown Improvement District for the Holodazzle Police Officer Assistance. Happy to answer any questions on those 23 items.
All right. Thank you very much. And last, we have Zoning and Planning with Councilmember Bender.
Thank you, Madam Chair. We have three items from zoning and planning. The cycle, item number one, is denying an appeal for a certificate of appropriateness which would allow for the demolition of the Burmashiv Building on East Lake Street. Item number two is approving a rezoning at 12 through 18 West 15th Street to allow for construction of a 75-unit residential development. And item number three is vacation of part of 30th Avenue South for metro transit. I can answer any questions.
All right. I'm not seeing questions relating to the zoning and planning report. So with that, I believe we have concluded with our business for today, and we are adjourned. Thank you.